Let's call city Richmond meeting to order, March 4th, 2020. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Our first item up is roll call. Myself, Jim Hemisch here. Councilman Pekowski.
Here.
Councilman Mathiason.
Here.
Councilwoman Craven is absent. Councilman Evans?
Here.
At this time, we'll open up our open public forum. Anybody wishing to address the council at this time will be allowed some time to speak. And if nobody wishes to, we'll move on. Go ahead.
Good evening and thank you once again for having this as part of your agenda. I'm Cliff Johnson from the Cold Spring Area Historical Society and inviting you and the community to our next program, which is this Friday, March 6th. It's during the day, unfortunately for a lot of people, 9:30 at the DEF in Cold Spring. The program is called "They Chose Minnesota." The speaker is Doug Omen, and he's written, oh, I don't know, 10, 12, 15 books about various aspects of Minnesota, churches, cabins, a lot of different things. You may have heard him, I don't know, some months ago, he spoke about cabins in Minnesota. He's an interesting speaker. The title, "They Chose Minnesota," you know, why did people come here? Most of us can, with grandparents, great-grandparents, we know, we at least have some idea that they weren't local, that they came here, they came here for a reason. One of, one of the local reasons is Father Peers. We've all heard that name, and that's going to be his topic that day. It's free and open. There will be cookies, there will be coffee, water, maybe if you need a pop at 9:30 in the morning, we can dig one of those up for you. It's an event that we're co-sponsoring with the Cold Spring Friends of the Library, and the event is made possible in part because of the legacy funds that Minnesota taxpayers some years ago voted to tax themselves so that we could have lots of different things, both protecting the environment and protecting in effect our culture. So, this Friday, 9:30 at the DEF in Cold Spring, "They Chose Minnesota." Any questions?
Cliff?
Yes?
Well-attended is the majority of these.
Uh, it, it varies. Oh, one time, I think, and it was a really good one, but we had like between 15 and 20. Uh, one time, we had Max Munnens, okay? And we had, I don't know, it was like 120, and he went on for two and a half hours, if you know Max. And he kept us, you know, kept the crowd occupied. I do have a couple posters, if anybody would like one, as a reminder.
Do we have one posted?
There's one on, out there, yep.
Any other local businesses, banks at all, or anything?
They're, they should be all around town, yep.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Get back. Is anybody else wishing to address the council at this moment? If not, we'll move on. Approval of the agenda for this evening, your new agenda's on with a few yellow marks on it. Those are the three major changes, the bottom are just, those are the ones that are speaking tonight, I guess, for reports.
If there's no other additions, I'll move to the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Approval of meeting minutes from February 20th, 2020, it was our meeting and our workshop. Is there any questions or comments on the minutes?
No questions, I make motion to approve both of them.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Cassette agenda for this evening, approval of bills paid from January 30th till February 29th. Item B is Resolution 112-20, approval of January 2020 journal entries. Item C is Resolution 113-20, approval of application and permit for one to four-day on-sale liquor license for River Lakes Hockey Inc. for April 18th, 2020, and that is a beer and wine tasting. Item D is Resolution 114-20, approval of application and permit for one to four-day on-sale liquor license for Christmas Care Drive for July 17th and 18th, 2020, which will be River Lake days. Item E is Resolution 115-20, authorization of lawful gambling, tax-exempt off-site lease and gambling permit for Richmond Lions on March 28th, 2020, which is customer appreciation at the Old Coliseum. And item F is Resolution 116-20, approval of application and permit for one to four-day liquor license for Country Snow Cruisers for July 16th, 17th, and 18th, 2020, and that would be River Lake days. With those six items, if there's no question, Pat?
A few different questions. First of all, two liquor licenses issued the same weekend?
Two different groups.
And where are these going to take place at?
Both at River Lake days.
Under resolution, it cites the actual location. I'm sorry?
Other Lake grounds are Central Avenue.
And then the other one is at, um...
They're both in the fancy area. Yep.
Yeah, St. Paul.
So they're going to be competing against each other?
They're both selling different product. Snow Cruisers have a beer and I'm not sure what the other one they have. The other one, I believe, is Spirits and Wine.
Who are the Christmas Care Drive?
That is a group that goes around every fall and delivers to the residents that are 65 and over. It's based out of farming, I believe.
Yep. We're represented here. If you want to know more, we can speak.
Yes, please.
Christmas Care Drive is based out of farming. We're based out of Trappers in farming. They've been around for, hmm, yeah, 96, I think, or 98. Tony Teal and started it. Basically, we do go around actually every holiday season, Christmas season, I should say, and we do deliver to 70 and over food baskets. I might look to Lucy, sorry, for the areas, because we do cover Richmond, we cover many areas. We also, our main focus, though, is helping families in need in the area and our local communities. This year alone, I know we helped over 30 families. We actually do help families throughout the year. Our main fundraiser is typically a live auction held at Trappers in farming for Saturday in December. I don't know, do you have any other questions besides that?
Are you an incorporated?
We are, yes. So we're a 501(c)(3), and we are incorporated as state of Minnesota. Yes.
Not just three, four people who want to apply?
Nope, nope. We've been, I think it's since 2000, I forget, sorry. But 13, I think, maybe, or 15.
Couple things here to make sure.
Yep. Nope, we are, and on the application does ask for that, for your, yep, your tax ID, yep, and everything, yes, and that's on there, and yes, we are a 501(c)(3).
And that's been approved by the River Lake Day Committee?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions for this item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I believe letter F is a misprint. Is that true?
Just about 77.
77? As long as bills are up, I have a couple of questions on the bill, since that's on the consent agenda. Check number 020164, Guggenberger Appraisal Service, what did we have appraised?
That was for the pro property.
Which one?
The pro, pro property that we had, we had to do, we had to do an appraisal on that for, that was through the EDA. To get it, to get it basically appraised for value.
To get it annexed?
Uh, no, not annexation, just to get it, just to get a...
This is the pro farm.
Yeah, the farm, yep, exactly right. We were looking at the possibility of, of doing some type of plotting on it for advancement with some businesses. And we had to put, and the 2000 was, was, the dollar was the amount that we agreed upon through the EDA for Guggenberger to come in and do a full appraisal on that piece of property that we were looking at, because we needed something for, for them and for also for the city.
Verified, "we" is the EDA?
EDA, EDA, EDA and pro, yep, both.
Because I've never seen it come through here, and then all of a sudden, the EDA's been working on this. So this is an EDA bill?
This is an EDA bill.
Okay, very good. Last item, check number 020168, Little Falls Machine, for plow cutting edges. Somebody asked me the other day where we have these done, and he threw our price at $350 to $400. So are these installed? Is this more than one? Do you have any idea?
Which page are you on?
The flip side, page two, top.
Okay. There were multiple edge assumptions.
And this person's local, so I'm just wondering, next time, we should look at it a little bit closer, and we will make that note to the, is the, probably works going to be here this evening?
Uh, no.
Okay. So, bring that to his attention, that it can be done in Cold Springs. Other than that, that's the only questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Nope.
If not, look for a motion to move.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Old business, Stearns County, Highway 2367 project, Mr. David Moore?
All right, good evening. Have a update here based on conversations with Stearns County. Stearns County is concerned about the condition of Main Street, both east and west, a couple of blocks that they were holding off on their work so we could do our underground utility work. Stearns County is looking for a little bit of a resolution as to whether we're going to proceed with that utility work, or whether or not we're willing to just let them do their paving and incur future costs to potentially replace those utilities if needed. So, time to probably reopen that conversation with you guys, get some feedback on that. We're looking to get the answer to the county probably yet this month. I don't think, I don't, I don't need it this evening. I'd like to chat with you guys further at your workshop, go into more detail with that, get you some stuff in your packets to look at. But it's on, it's on the list, and once we're considering that, it's probably time to look at the rest of the street project and see where it stands. Certainly, I drove the roads this evening, and they're not in great shape, those that we considered, especially for a street south, it's pretty tough. So, certainly want to, want to kick that back on the, on the top of the priority list here again, and see where we're at with it, run through the numbers, see how it funds out. Certainly, it's not an easy one, but it's going to be prime time for complaints this weekend, if I had to guess, with, with the melt and, and potholes coming back, so it's, it's, I'm guessing you guys are going to hear about it.
Counter Road 67, in what direction do we need?
Counter Road 67 is the easternmost three blocks of Main Street, starting at Oakwood, heading east, and then Counter Road 23 from...
Before that, that shouldn't have any underground work.
And it does not. That, that portion does not, Pat. So, it is the west portion, Counter Road 23. They were, starting at where County Road 9 turns there. County Road 9, Grant Avenue, turns, heads west. Those three blocks, we have utility work. We have a six-inch water main that is bound on either side by a 12-inch and a 10-inch water main. So we have a constriction in the system with no parallel route, and it makes nothing but sense to make that hole and fix it up while the county was going to do their work, save us some cost on the street restoration cost.
There is no parallel route on First Street Northwest that loops on County Road 23 West, in between First and Second Street?
There is no direct route with the adequate size. So there, there is, there is six inch up that direction, but with the 10-inch and 12-inch, there's an extreme reduction in flow there. So the velocities in that six-inch pipe would be pretty extreme when we have demand on the west side of town, so.
Have you taken a water flow sample to find out what it, what it would be? I mean, two six-inch looped should be the same as a 10-inch?
Actually, it's not. With that 12-inch, it'll be significantly more, especially on a straight path, because we're talking about a system that's involving 90-degree bends, curves, fittings, that kind of thing. When we're talking a connection between a 10 and a 12, there's a pretty significant, you're right, flow area, two six inches and a 10-inch are pretty close. But when we, when we drop that down and go around the system, it's, we got some pretty significant losses. We've had complaints about pressure and volume on the west end of town. It's an opportunity to, to fix that, and that's, and that's why we pursued it. So, I need input from you guys on that. Like I said, I'd like to discuss it with you at your workshop meeting, where we can go into detail, I can get you some numbers, I'll get those in your packet for you guys to study.
Because I thought the only place we have a 12-inch is from tower to tower.
We have a 12-inch that runs down Main Street.
Yeah, that loops into the tower.
That's correct. And then we have a 10-inch on County Road 23, beginning at, what is that? Is that fur over there where it starts? There's a water map right over my shoulder, I'm sure. But either way, there, there's a 10-inch that starts over there that was installed with the Counter Road 23 project in, I believe, in the 90s. So there was forethought to do that.
92, it was.
Okay, perfect. So, yeah, so that, the idea was, you know, eventually, we'd fix that particular section. It's six-inch ductile pipe, I'm not concerned about the condition of it, it's just a chance to upgrade the capacity, hopefully at a reduced cost to the city, because the pavement is being covered by Stearns County. So that was the motivation to do it. There's one block of clay sanitary sewer that was going to be replaced as well. That was mostly an attempt to get funding for it. So we did get grant funds for the sanitary sewer portion of it. It's pretty minor by comparison, though. The water main is really the driving factor there, so.
So you'll bring numbers at the workshop?
That's my intent, yeah.
Could you do another favor for me, and maybe some of the financial people here? Since the prime dropped to 1%, is that correct, over the last few days here?
I know, it certainly went down a half on emergency rate. I don't, I don't know about, the Fed actually went a half. It may have gone a full, full point, Pat, I don't know.
Some financing, is if this would be the year to do it or not?
Potentially. I, I, I think, I think there's some, some wisdom to that, and I also think there's a gentleman coming up after me that can answer that question better than I. So, otherwise...
Counter Road 23 would just be to the corner heading north?
So...
Up and at it is brand new?
Yes, correct. So our portion that we're doing is, is the portion of Counter Road 23 that the county didn't do. They're also going north of town starting next year, I believe, on County 23 and 20.
But I'm worried about utilities.
Yeah, so our, yeah, the only portion I'm concerned about is those three blocks immediately west of where we stopped our downtown project from a few years back, so.
From Grant to Fer.
Grant to Fer, yep. Those three blocks are of the biggest concern to me. That's where we have our water main constriction, that's where we have one block of sanitary sewer that's in questionable condition, we can call it that. So.
Yeah, come back with some numbers for our workshop, then.
Let's chat those through and see what you guys think. Keep your ears open for, for complaints and those kind of things over the weekend here. If you guys note water concerns, specifically, you know, flooding is the wrong term, because it's seasonal ponding that we're seeing. If you guys hear about those, please jot them down, so we can note those locations, so we know what to look for, see what we can do to fix those when that time comes. So, they're, they're going to be coming.
Right now, when you drive down either First Street South or North, there's puddles, like every, every block has one puddle.
Yes.
Before I came tonight.
And I, I...
Got water sitting there, and...
I did the same thing, Jim. It, yeah, absolutely, and they're not getting any better, as we know. So, like I said, just keep yours out, those resident feedback is very important, because we, they see it every day. We can, we can take a snapshot of what it looks like right now, but those residents that's out in front of their house, they, they keep track of it, they know where it goes, they know how high it gets, and they've probably got a good idea, honestly, how to fix it, too, so. Nothing else from me, I'll see you guys in a couple weeks.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave.
Next item up is Highway 23 Coalition. In your packet, you had gotten a letter from Coalition, that's something that we joined, I believe, two years ago.
Yes.
Trying to hold strike, for the four-way highway all the way through to Wilmer. Then they're asking for our participation, or membership again, of $1,500 to be... I know it's coming, but it's just the point of, I think, trying to finish off everything we're trying to work towards.
Well, it's outstanding, I make a motion to, to approve that.
I'll second.
So that'll be about another two years.
Prox, proximal. Any other discussion? Those who have a motion, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Uh, new business, refunding bond, J.C. Murray from David Brown Associates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I do, one in your packet, that was on the dais. I just want to make sure they read the right one, because there's been some changes made to this one.
Yeah, there was a, there was a secondary one sent out.
The newest one that was on your dais, the new one, I came in your packet, wasn't that something? Okay?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall, last September, I was here to discuss this potential refunding of the 2012 aid bonds. We're in an environment right now that it has positioned us to, to take a look at it and come to you for your consideration of refunding. If you recall, last September, we talked about doing this as a rated, rated deal, and potentially trigger, the, the trigger resolution was a minimum savings of about $60,000. One of the things that, since we were here in September, obviously with Tessa's absence, getting that rating is going to be a challenge, because staff is, is vital in that ratings call and in that process. So we actually worked on trying to directly negotiate this with the market through Barrett, and we were able to, to successfully do that, what I believe is successfully do that, because we were able to hit your trigger. Right now, we're sitting at about a net present value savings of about $64,000 on this deal, and it's mainly because of the interest rate savings over the life of the deal. So, there is a summary in your packet, should be a summary, it looks like just a one-page quick, maybe not.
That didn't change.
Nope, this part didn't change. This one, this one came from, was the resolution. Yep. So basically, that one-page summary just kind of shows it to you. It's on the left side, it's your existing 2012 aid bonds, and then moving to the right. With issuance and everything, it's about a $1,150,000 bond. You can see that we're locking this interest rate over the life of the bond, 2.6% interest through 2040. And as you move right over that sheet, you can kind of see that there's a gross present, gross savings of about $84,000, and a net present value savings of about $64,700. So we were able to hit that trigger for you. If the, the council wants to consider this, it's just a matter of initiating that sales resolution that you have in front of you tonight. With that, Mayor and Council, just kind of pause, and see if you get any questions.
Well, anytime you can save money, yes, it is a long period of time, 20 years, but I don't think that the interest rate is going to drop anymore than, if it is, it's going to be very, very fractional. And for the due diligence of our taxpayers, we definitely have to seriously look at this, if not approve this tonight. I personally am definitely in favor, anytime we can save any substantial amount of money on this. Sounds like a lot of money, but we've had that loan out there for quite some time, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, if I could, Councilmember Evans, just make a comment on that. Because of the term and the size of this bond, this is, this is very sensitive to interest rates. As you've seen, seen in my letter, if this, if the interest rate moves up even 50 basis points, a half a point, we lose pretty much all of our savings. We lose about $55,000 in savings. So, this, you know, it's, you see the issuance costs on here? These are real savings. This is a, this is a refunded bond, including those issuance costs, still netting that present value savings of about $64,000. So, it's sensitive to interest rates. If you, if you like to gamble, we can, we can certainly put it on hold and see what the rates do, but it's, 2.6 is the lowest rate I've seen in, in quite a while.
Taking that 2012, or taking a bunch of different, different rates in there, and actually just making one, one flat one?
Yep. You, you range from about 2.15 to about 4% over the life of that, if you were to leave this 2012 bond out there, and you're basically taking that, so looking at that, you're probably right around 3, 3.5 of net effective interest rate, you're driving that down to about 2.6.
Yeah, that's definitely a little, yeah, for sure.
With that, I make a motion to approve.
Resolution 11? Item 3?
Oh, item 3, then. On 17-20.
Authorization, sale and delivery of GO utility refunding Series 2020.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Is there anything else you need to input before we vote?
Should be good.
Aye.
Oppose? Carry.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. If there's any questions, I apologize, I gotta sneak out to another council meeting, but just on follow-up on your conversation with your engineer, certainly, as you get preliminary numbers, we'd, we'd welcome the opportunity to, to run some debt scenarios for you, if you'd like, and just kind of give you an idea what the market is bearing. Well, to Councilmember Evans, to answer your question about the, the drop in rate earlier this week, we'll probably start to see that hit the market next week. Things that were in the pipeline are already, it's a little challenging to, to understand what that true drop in interest rate from earlier this week, what it means, but we'll start to see it next week, and we'll see what the market does, as obviously today was back up, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to department reports for this evening, starting with the police report.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Start out with just a monthly report for January. In the city of Richmond, we had 88 total incidents, 11 medicals, five suspicious activities, 20 traffic stops with eight citations in those, and then 35 miscellaneous calls for service. Some of the other stuff we have going on is, there is, with the save stations that went up through that grant that was received, we have free CPR trainings that are being put on. Third Street Brew House in Cold Spring has volunteered to host those for us. There can be, I think they said, 25 to 30 people in each class. As of right now, there's two classes that have been scheduled. If those classes fill, there's room to set up more, so just hoping to get a lot of public interest to set those up. It's a one-hour class, there's one on Saturday, March 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and then there's another one on Wednesday, April 22nd, from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And I'll also post a flyer in the, the entryway here. But it's just, it's a free class to get everybody kind of educated on what the DFIBs can do, and then CPR on how to help people if, if the need arises. Some of the other stuff is, we created a, we had a Facebook page, and then for some odd reason, Facebook said that page wasn't valid anymore, they won't let us reopen it, so we created a new Facebook page. So if you see it out there, we're trying to get information out on there. One of the things we put out is a teen driving class that's being put on by the Minnesota Highway Safety Research Center. It's over on Highway 10. It's for new drivers, ages 16 to 20. Parents, the, parents can, their parents have to go with them. I think it's an all-day class, but a lot of insurance companies give a discount for the individuals that go through there, so if anybody has anybody in that age group, I think insurance is high on kids that age, so if you can get a discount, I think it's definitely a good thing to do, and it gives the kids a lot of good tips on just collision avoidance and that kind of stuff. So, also have that posted. And then one big thing is with tax season, we're seeing a lot of increased frauds of IRS issuing warrants, that kind of stuff. If anything, the IRS will get ahold of you by mail. If there's any phone calls, anything like that, that you receive, that is saying you have a warrant, you need to buy gift cards, and gift cards is one of the big red flags that they want you to go do, and they keep you on the phone while you go get those gift cards. So if anything comes up that, you think there's an issue, give us a call, and we'll try and help you out as much as we can. But that is one of the big frauds that is going on right now, so. Other than that, I, unless you guys have questions for me.
Just two definitions, please. OFP violation?
Order for protection violation, so harassment, no restraining order, that kind of thing.
Special detail?
Can be anything from, like, if we bring the canines into the school, if...
Something that didn't cost us more, or our, or anything?
Nope, no cost, it's just something to say, so dispatch knows we're here doing this.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Alright, thanks, thank you.
Department report. Chief Justin Comer.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. For the month of February, we ran six medical calls, one lymphocyst, and two fire calls, for a total of nine calls total. If you read in the news, Northern Meadow Recycling down in Becker had that fire. We actually sent nine of our individuals down to help out with that. Sent our pumper along with our water tender down for help out with that, so very appreciated with that. Everything ran phenomenal down there, so. For training, last month, we went through Skywarn training. We had the St. Cloud Amateur Radio Club, Lee Denny come out, put on a class. Members got certified for weather spotting. Was a four-hour class, and members are certified for two years. So, it's good getting more people out there, watching the weather come in, and especially what happened down in Tennessee today. Weather's upon us here shortly, so. For truck detail, no major issues to report. Next item should go down to equipment, but the old SCBA's, which were access property, the ones that worked yet, they did get sold to the local colleges for training purposes. Then all the communication equipment is up to par, running great. FEMA, I met with our grant writer last month. We have a application for a new pumper along with an automatic CPR compression device for CPR. It does more true compressions on them to help with, you know, life-saving measures, so. Other upcoming topics, we got our annual bike ride fundraiser coming up later on this year. We're trying to finalize a date for that. I know it was normally in springtime, but with cold weather, wind, and we're trying to kind of get it further out in the year, so we're shooting towards the end of the summer. And then, March 21st, we'll be attending the Farm Safety Day up in Albany. The Albany chief contacted me, asking for if anybody's interested in helping. Just basically goes through, if you read in the news, there's a lot of grain, or not grain, farm accidents, anywhere from grain bin entrapment to PTO, to manure pit, all the hazards on the farm. So, it's a community event. We'll have scenarios set up. It's actually at the Albany School. We've got Commissioner of Agriculture is planning on being there, Governor Walz is planning on being there. So, there will be a lot of higher-end people there, whatever, so. Then also, April 17th, we'll be helping Cold Spring Fire and Police with the mock crash coming up in Cold Spring. So, other than that, that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, feel free.
Just two questions. Unless I missed it, I've never seen an authorization of selling excess property. Was that in the last month or so?
That was already, what, two years ago? Authorized the thing to sell?
Two years ago, it's before my term, but was it under bid?
It was. Yeah, we had, we had three other people look at them, and then we just took the highest bid, which was the... I'd have to look back, but it was, the contact was from Hydro Pro Testing. Pro Testing, I'm sorry, Pro Hydro Testing, the guys that come out and test all of our SCBA's and tanks, so.
The other question is, when you were at Becker with the only pumper that we have, what was protecting Richmond?
We have our, looked into that, our grass rig, which is technically a pumper. We looked at that for our initial truck going out, and then I also reached out to our local neighboring departments. So, because pretty much 10 out of 10 times, we get a structure fire, we're automatically going to be pulling mutual aid as well, so.
Your grass rig is less than 500 gallons per minute?
Right, for interior tack, no. So, we're just looking at exterior tack, just get the the water on the fire a couple minutes, just to cool down as much as we can until we got other equipment in here, so.
So, in other words, for those 12 hours, we were banking on mutual aid?
Technically, no. Because we still had water protecting the city.
Not the interior structure, though?
Correct. Any other questions?
People's services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I was just gonna touch on a couple items here tonight. One of them, we got into the report. Is the reed beds and looking into land out, land applying of our bio solids this year. They're, right now, all of our sludge, we'll call it for easier terms. The sludge goes up into reed beds. It has ever since that plant went online, since we had the reeds going in '07. We hauled it at fall of '06, so spring, since '07, we've been applying to the reed beds. And there's still room in the reed beds and everything, we have a lot of sludge storage, but because we use the biope process for phosphorus removal. Essentially, what happens is, we got basically seven parts per million of phosphorus coming into the plant, and .1 to .2 going out parts per million, when the biope process is working good and we're not taking any water from the reed beds or anything. The phosphorus in most of the facilities that don't have reed beds, every year, the phosphorus leaves, gets land applied. Leaves the facility, it's gone. For us, it's just compounding and compounding. We ran some tests, we had really high phosphorus, we had to do like a 200 to 1 dilution just to, for our testing equipment to be able to handle the phosphorus on site. By, I'm hoping to have by the workshop, I can report to you guys, kind of get an idea of exactly how we would load the trucks, what it would cost, if we got to rent a pump, whatever. And we got to make sure the soils are going to be suitable, that kind of stuff, because it's going to be higher phosphorus concentration bio solids going on these. Another option will be, we could try to decant what, when you decant, it's, there's the clear liquid that's in the digester where our sludge is. We can pump the clear liquid out of there, which is really high concentration. We could send that through the plant, but we'd have to pound and pound it with chemical to meet, to stay under our one limit. Last week, when we did do some decanting to make some more storage, we, and we put some chemical towards it, but we did have over a 2 milligrams per liter leaving the facility. We have to meet a 1.0 12-month rolling average for our phosphorus limit. So, that 2-point, whatever it was, gets divided by 104 other samples, and when they're at a .1, .2, you know, that's pretty low numbers to divide by, so. Which is giving you guys a heads up, I'm going to be getting prices, everything. We are, about the only solution we can have is get rid of all the sludge we have there right now and start over in them tanks. We're always going to have it, it's going to be in the reed beds until we do something with them, and that'll be my next topic, but the phosphorus is going to be in the reed beds. And like, when we get heavy rains, even if we don't send any of the bio solids up there, and we get heavy rains, the reed beds drain back, there's an underdrain system that goes back to the head of the plant, comes through. That's, we get high spikes of phosphorus at that time also. So, it is going to be up there, will remain to be a problem, but not near as bad as what it is. Because the reeds, there is an uptake of phosphorus in the reeds, the plant themselves.
So, you have a plan of where this gets hauled to?
Yes, I talked to Chuck Schmitz, and he's definitely interested in taking it on his fields. He is an approved site for the city of Richmond. We'll have to do the soil tests and all that stuff, because they haven't been done. You got to do them every three years when you are using it, so we'll have to get all that stuff up to date.
Once you dig this sludge out, then you have to replant whatever?
Well, I'll get to, this is just out of the tanks that I'm going to be hauling it out.
Just out of the tanks?
Yes. Nothing out of the reed, that's my next subject. This is just the tanks, to get rid of, out of the tanks. So, we're not decanting as much now or anything, we're trying to have it full, so once we do haul, we're going to get rid of all the phosphorus we can. But now, good segue right to the reed beds. I reported to you guys a while back that the MPC has notified us that our plants, the fragmites we have there, are non-native. Non-native fragmites are right now classified restricted, and eventually, it's going to go to prohibited. They are going to give us what we'll call a phase-out period. They're not going to say you have to do it now, it's whenever we finally have to do something with them. We are not going to be able to plant, replant what we have there. We can go to the native, some witches, City of Avon has them. They have very few plants, but mainly mostly cattails. They're a lot harder to grow for some reason. They do the same thing. They have, they, I don't know, I was just at a meeting on, Monday it was, 9:30 in the morning, they made us go to St. Paul, the MPC office. And there's 14 other facilities, there's a lot more other facilities that have reed beds. There's 14 facilities that have the non-native that are fighting this now. Can't say fighting it, they're dealing with this. You know, this is what it is, and we want to do what's best. Right now, the department, it was, the Department of Ag was there, the MPC was there, the Minnesota DNR was there, and same with the U of M. When we left the meeting, we know that the U of M is going to be going for grants, two half-million, million-dollar grants, and they're going to be trying to work with facilities to figure out how to phase the ones out and try to get the natives planted back in there. They're, they're going to do a lot of research, and I raised, yeah, we'll be the guinea pigs here. We'll try something if it's going to, you know, cost us a lot less, whatever. And we are one of their sites, that the U of M was here a couple months ago to look at, actually, it was last fall, I think, to look at what we had, you know, to figure out. And of course, they go walking around, because the reason these are becoming prohibited is they can, the seeds, they can seed and go into wetlands, and they can take over wetlands, wet areas, that kind of stuff, you can just have the blooms of the fragmites come up, and they can choke out any other life that's in there. And it has happened elsewhere, they really don't have much documentation of it happening around Minnesota, but it has happened elsewhere. And Minnesota's actually behind on a lot of other states on policing these, supposedly. But where we left the meeting is, the Commissioner of Ag still has not prohibited these yet, they're still unrestricted, they want feedback. They've, they never thought that they were going to get feedback from wastewater plants initially, and this is all new to them. And the Commissioner of Ag is like, curious why wastewater plants, he wants to hear what cities plan on doing, and they were doing a lot of research on different things we can do, and that's where the U of M's involved, that they're going to see what they can do to get, figure out what's going to be an easy, affordable way for municipalities to handle this problem. Because they don't want to just throw it out there, you have to deal with it. If we, when the time comes that we have to get rid of the reeds that are in there, it could end up being costly, because the root stock and everything, you got to get rid of everything, even wash the walls and stuff, because any little seed in there, it's going to grow again and come back as non-native. So, and they're going to, that's where the U of M's involved, and they've been studying these for a while now and trying to figure out which way to go, and they're trying for a grant, and that's kind of the next step, and the Department of Ag is kind of spearheading this, because they're the ones that are putting them on this list. MPC is just kind of going with whatever is said, because they, you know, essentially, we have to go by what's on our permit from the MPC. You know, and this is just something that's coming from a whole different, you know, it could be Stearns County Weed Inspector that's going to come out and nab us for it. Essentially, because he's under the Department of Ag's watch, whatever. So, it was, you know, different, there was nobody really taking full charge of it between all of them, but yet, the Department of Ag is the one that's reclassifying it, so he's the one that finally said, well, from here on, we're going to try to get these grants and see what can happen, and he'll report back to the Commissioner, because the Commissioner wasn't there, it was one of his guys, he'll report back to the Commissioner, see what he says, how he wants to handle this, and and there'll be future meetings, so.
I suppose when we do this, we have to do all the reed beds at the same time, otherwise, they're going to cross pollinate.
Correct. And right, and, you know, that was one of the questions I asked, is would we be better off? Now, right now, you can still haul them. You can transport and land apply what's in there. And, but you got to even get special permit to even haul it. There is, I think it was Wisconsin, they can't even land apply theirs anymore. They have to send, bring it to a landfill, which doubles, triples the cost, because you got to pay tipping fees. So, it's like, would we be better off getting rid of them right now? Because are you guys going to restrict this, you know, from being land applied, or? But they didn't sound like we should go down that road yet.
You're concerned about the county? Bob Dunne from the Ag part of Stearns County, that said the county's not going to do nothing until the state comes down on it.
Is that what Bob said?
Yeah. He already told us that our Stearns County, that they were not going to do nothing until the state decided what to do, to move forward, so.
It's good to know.
The problems there, it's just a matter of how is the state going to deal with this?
Mm-hmm. And the state really don't know quite yet. But it's something we're going to have to...
And in 2000, they okayed it.
What's that?
And in 2000, they, they okayed the weeds to be planted.
Oh, absolutely. And yeah, it's, to me, it's a much better option to land apply, because you're, there's a lot of nutrient value in all that sludge that's going out there, farmers kind of fight over it, and that's why Chuck is more than willing to take it. You know, we'd have been much better off that way, but... That's all I have. Any other questions for me?
How is the new operator so far?
Justin, he's doing well, you know, and he, I gave him, gave him tonight to go home and study, he'll be taking one of his wastewater exams tomorrow at St. Cloud, so. No, he's doing quite well. Got introduced to reading water meters last week. That's another thing we can talk about more at the workshop too, but the the water meters, they're getting to a point, I think they guarantee the battery's 10 years, and then after that, well, it's over 10 years now, so there's, some of them are starting to read a little weaker and stuff, but it's all things, am I forgetting anything, Sonny?
Are you thinking March is workshop, you want to come back, or?
Probably. I hope so. I hope to have some stuff by then, yes.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Then you would just need to have that stuff to test them next week, to get it into the packet?
Oh, to get in the, might not have all the pricing, but yeah.
That's my, okay.
Definitely target stuff, so. Any other questions?
Thanks, Greg.
Alright, thank you, guys, have a good night.
I don't see a park and arena report. Public works, you have one on your dais, obviously, it's snowing, ice is raining, freezing, mild temps. Obviously, Dave spoke about the project for 2020. The wellhead protection, that's, he's been getting the requirements done for the state. Imagine finishing right up here at the end of the month. And then, the one water break they had, they had an issue at Maplewood Apartments, and they did that, I don't know, on the 7th. Found a broken line underneath the building. They didn't know if it was under the building or out in the street anyway, because the water was coming up all over, so. Took care of that. That's all pretty much covered, yeah, that was the report. With that said, we'll move on to the minister's report.
Just a couple of things. One, we had our presidential primary voting yesterday, we had eight, Richmond had 86 votes cast. That's 10% of your, so. And then, also, I know it's important for you to know where the overtime and time is at, and currently, that's sitting at a cumulative balance of 20 hours and 60, 20.63 hours. And then, the final thing is, this will be my last meeting with you, Tessa's back on Monday. So, thank you for this opportunity. I've enjoyed working with you and the EDA and other staff and contracted personnel. Thanks so much. You made me feel wonderful.
Thank you, Sonny.
Thank you, Sonny. Appreciate it.
There you go.
That's it for me.
Thank you. We'll move on to council report, EDA and Mike.
Yeah, we did have a meeting on February 18th. We did have one thing on our agenda that we were going to discuss a little bit, and, but it, but it wasn't posted, so we had to kind of take that off the agenda and stuff too, so hopefully, during our next meeting, we'll be able to discuss that. That meeting is on March 17th here at City Hall. We are talking about different availability of maybe some land usage within the city. Trying to get some suggestions about the possibility, if this particular development that we're looking at on the corridor of Highway 23... that we're looking at on, on the corridor of Highway twenty-three becomes available and we move forward with it. One of the things that was brought up that seems to be something that always kind of comes back to the city of Richmond, and one of the things was that, somebody made a suggestion about what about a possibility of a motel hotel possibly here in the, in the city of Richmond, so that's one thing, if by chance, something moves forward with this, with our Highway twenty-three, a possible project that we're, that we're looking at and dealing with, that might be something that we're going to seriously look into. There's a demand for it in this area. We find that there is not a lot of places in and around the area here to be able to stay when people come in, either for the summer or even just a simple hockey tournament, you know, during the winter. Sometimes people come from, from out of town, and always looking for a possibility of a place to stay in and around the area, and St. Claude has, or pardon me, Cold Spring has a nice facility, but obviously, that can only handle so many people. So that was one thing that was kind of discussed, too, along with the possibility of other potential businesses, again, too, if we're going to move, move forward with that. One of the discussions we continually talk about, too, is, is bike racks. We've been looking at some redesigns of some bike racks, we got some really good ideas going with that currently right now. There are two possible locations in the city limits here currently right now. The bank has, has graciously gave us a little piece of property where they would let us put a bike rack on, and then over actually buy Food Pride, the grocery store, also, too. We've kind of been looking at that, working with some of the high school kids for looking at some designs that, that might work, and so we're, we're working with that a little bit, too. Also looking at Highway twenty-three, we want to get back with the state a little, Minnesota a little bit here, too, because the one thing we find, that the majority of the people that are driving up and down Highway twenty-three think that the businesses that are on Highway twenty-three is all Richmond has to offer. They literally drive by and they think, okay, we have a Casey's, we have a Jules Cafe, we have a liquor store, we have another gas station, and we got a dollar store on the other end, and an AW, and that's all we have. And people don't realize that, no, there are actually other businesses that are, that are downtown, so we're trying to look at possibly getting some type of signage coming off of there, you see a lot of the blue signs, that will say, if you go to any major road, it'll say that downtown businesses are pointing in a direction. So we're going to work with the state with that, see if we can come up with, with some signage with that, too. So other than that, the EDA is just kind of continually looking at, looking at different ways to continually approve the city, trying to fill our empty businesses in downtown, and then also, we have one opening yet, too, for, within the city, for the EDA, we're looking for one member. We did have one gentleman resign, Sheldon Lang, was, it was his last meeting. Sheldon originally started with the EDA from the, from the start, and so we're looking, if anybody's interested, they can contact City Hall and get an application. We're trying to fill that position as quick as we can, so that's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me.
Thanks, Mike. Rickory Carroll?
Rickory Carroll, we had a meeting on first of February, just kind of an update, they're just waiting for our loan, hopefully that gets approved by the state and gets pushed all the way through and get granted. That's what we're waiting for right now, and if everything goes as possibly, it could be a possibility that we could start this one. So that's where we're at, we're just waiting to, wait for the state right now to move this loan, there's a grant that we're vying for, so...
Our next council meeting is March nineteenth, two thousand twenty, at six-thirty. Pat? Just one clarification, who's in charge of our Christmas lights since it's March? And I don't know of another city around that has them up yet. Is it the Chamber of Commerce or is it the city?
I believe the city put them up. If you remember, we couldn't use the equipment that we had, and so we had to wait.
The EDA holds them.
Yeah. But I'll follow up on that.
But it's March.
Yeah, it's good, we should probably get those down with the program.
Unless we're going to keep them up all year.
Don't think we need to do that.
All right. Next meeting is March nineteenth, at six-thirty. Thank you.